Good morning. At this time, we'll call to order the Board of County Commissioners meeting for Thursday, April the 11th. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Faust.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Kleka.
Here.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Here.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
And Chairman Eiler.
Here. All our present, we do have a quorum. Would you join with me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For those who are present, if you have a noise-making device, would ask that you turn it to silent mode or off, so as not to interfere with electronic communications, as all of our meetings are streamed online. We do have one special presentation to make this morning. I'm going to ask Brandy Hodge to join me at the podium for sharing a proclamation. Brandy is in charge of Volunteer Center for our county department. And the proclamation this morning is honoring volunteers and recognizing National Volunteer Week. I will simply say this, and Brandy can correct me if I'm wrong, but we literally have hundreds and hundreds of volunteers that support county activities in many different areas. And without those volunteers, we would not be able to provide the level of service and educational opportunities that currently are conducted. So, I know that she has several guests with her this morning, who will share with us some of those activities. But, Brandy, on behalf of the commission, I'll present this proclamation to you in recognition of the outstanding service that all of our volunteers provide for Johnson County. And if you'd like to make some comments.
All right. Thank you, Chairman Eiler and commissioners. My name is Brandy Hodge. I am the Community Relations Manager for Johnson County Human Services. I serve as the Chair of the Johnson County Volunteer Coordinator Group, which was established in 2009. This group consists of 13 different county departments and 29 individuals. The departments that utilize volunteers include Corrections, Court Services, District Attorney's Office, Developmental Supports, Election Office, Emergency Management, Health and Environment, Human Services, Case State Extension, Library, Medac, Parks and Recreation, and the Sheriff's Office. Today, we have several members with us that are either volunteer coordinators or are volunteers with the county, so if they could please stand, and I know we'll get a picture in a moment, but I just want to give them a round of applause right now. April is one of our favorite times of the year, because it's the one time of year that we get to really focus on volunteer appreciation. Even though we, of course, appreciate our volunteers year-round, this is the one week where we really spend time recognizing and appreciating everything that they bring to the county. Residents make volunteer to make a difference, or because it's something that they believe that's important. And in Johnson County, there's no exception. In 2018, approximately 14,600 volunteers served nearly 586,000 hours. The independent sector sets an annual volunteer rate for volunteer time. In 2018, Johnson County volunteers donated nearly $14.5 million of time, services, and talent to the community. So today, I'm going to keep my comments brief. We have four different volunteers from different departments with us that are going to share their why. Why do they volunteer, and what it means to them to be a volunteer? So please welcome Larry, Linda, Stephanie, and Herb, and they are from Developmental Supports, Corrections, Case State Extension, and Emergency Management. Whoever would like to go first.
Come on up.
All right.
I guess I shouldn't be.
Herb, here we go.
Herb, good to see you, sir.
Good to see you. Good to see you. My name is Herb Fiddick. I live in Overland Park, and I'm here representing today Johnson County Emergency Communications Service. That is a volunteer organization made up of ham radio operators, who have been actually volunteering with county emergency management, and actually, prior to that, the sheriff's office, for over 50 years. I represent about 65 members, who donated 1,300 hours of time in 2018 to help Dan Robison and the emergency management staff with storm spotting. That's our primary mission as amateur radio operators. We go out in the field and work closely with the duty officers and do storm spotting for them. So, we're here today, and we appreciate the proclamation, and we appreciate the support of the county, and we look forward to keep doing it another 50 years.
Herb, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Why don't you stand over here?
Okay.
Don't be bashful now, guys.
Hi.
Good to see you.
Hi. I'm Larry Miller. I am an official old settler, okay? Been in Olathe for over 40 years, so I'm registered, okay? But I retired three years ago, and my wife and I have been involved in various activities in Johnson County. But I'm here to talk about the Voices Program. Johnson County Developmental Supports has an awesome program. It's great for retired folks, but anyone else can sure join in and participate with us, because what we do is we team up with a person with developmental disabilities, and it's kind of like a big brother, big sister thing, where we just spend time with them, and we do fun events with them. So the gentleman that I team up, I can say his name, Mark Smith, is an awesome gentleman, and he and I volunteer on Meals on Wheels. We volunteer at Mission Southside Food Pantry, and Mark helps me with Kansas City Regap, which is a group that helps retired greyhound race dogs find forever homes. So Mark and I are involved in a lot of different activities. But what the Voices Program does is it teams up a person with a person at Johnson County Developmental Supports, and you share time together. You go out to eat together. It's not complicated. You get to share your interests together. Mark and I go fishing together, and we just do various activities.
Larry, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Hi. I'm Linda Kazachek, and I volunteer with an organization called Cultivate in the Department of Corrections. I teach a life skills course that has been in the College of Trades Program, which is a collaborative program between Cultivate and the Johnson County Department of Corrections. And so what we do is we offer a variety of technical trade programs that our clients, future ex-offenders, can enroll in, so that they're better prepared for the workforce. But then they have to come through my life skills course, which is more of a professional development course, hopefully designed to help them keep their jobs and have more successful life outside of when they're released. In my previous role, I worked for Johnson County Community College in the Adult Education Program. I was a transition coach, working with GED and ESL students. So that gave me an insight to working with non-traditional students, and helping me connect them to the college to help them reach their educational goals. I love to do that. I have a passion for that, and I'm taking that to Corrections. I've been able to bridge the college with Corrections to create pathways, so that students can further their training and hopefully be better contributors to our community. So I just, I love it.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Stephanie Marks, and I'm representing Case State Research and Extension. And thank you, commissioners, for this opportunity to recognize our amazing county organizations and all of the dedicated volunteers. At Johnson County Case State and Research and Extension, we have more than 1,200 volunteers who give back to our community by facilitating research-based educational programming. In 2018 alone, these dedicated volunteers contributed more than 84,000 service hours. That's the equivalent of 40 full-time employees. While the cumulative numbers may capture our attention, more powerful is the impression that we make on each individual. 4H is the youth development component of extension programming, and as an alumna, I have experienced firsthand the profound impact an engaged community can have on a young mind. The adults that guided me through failed sewing projects and taught me to plan events, speak in public, and run effective meetings had lifelong impacts. The countless hours they invested in my own development continue to inspire my community service today, as we strive to teach the next generation. I am proud to live, work, and volunteer with the people of Johnson County, as we build a strong community for both today and tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, that gives you all a very brief idea of the activities that our volunteers perform on behalf of our citizens every day. They are, they do important work, and I can't emphasize that much, that too much. I would also say to those who are in the audience or listening to, watching the program, there's all kinds of opportunities to volunteer. If you want to get involved in our volunteer effort, whatever it might be, contact Brandy at the Human Services, and there are always lots of opportunities. So Brandy, you want to come up? Are there other volunteers here that you'd like to include in the photo? Let's get them all up here. We'll just kind of gather here, so. Thank you, guys.
Do you want me to hold it?
Yes, why don't you hold it, and I'll get to see you. No, I'll get to see you. Good morning. How are you? We're probably going to have to, I have a couple of rows here, so if this half can come over here and kind of get in front, or?
Sure.
How you doing, Eric?
I think they're okay.
Martin?
I think they're okay.
Okay. All right. That's why.
Well, that's right.
Good to see you.
Well, again, thank you all for your work. Well, yeah, thank you all for your work. I understated. I said hundreds of volunteers, and it's really thousands of volunteers. And amazing work that our volunteers do. Thank you all very much. At this time, we'll move to the public comment portion of our agenda. If there's anyone present who would like to address the commission on an item which does not later appear on the agenda, welcome you to the podium. State your name and address. Limit your comments to five minutes, and we'll be glad to receive that information. Is there anyone present who would like to address the commission? If not, the public comment portion of our agenda is concluded. I do have several notes for the record this morning. I will be signing the following. A partial release and full release of easements for the Consolidated Domain Sewer District due to the removal of sanitary sewer lines at 121st and Cabira Road in the city of Overland Park. A partial release of easement for the Consolidated Domain Sewer District due to removal of sanitary sewer line at College Boulevard and Metcalf Avenue in the city of Overland Park. And a partial release of easement for the Consolidated Domain Sewer District due to the removal of sanitary sewer lines at 143rd Street and Flum in the city of Olathe. That concludes our notes for the record. We'll move to the consent agenda. Would the clerk please read the proposed consent agenda?
There are no consent agenda items today.
There are no consent agenda, okay? Action agenda item?
I move approval of the consent.
Pardon?
I want to move something off the consent agenda.
Just so we can consider it.
Item number one. Consider approving the March 21st, 2019 Business Session Minutes. Commissioner Kleka was absent.
Mr. Allen.
Move for approval of the March 21st, 2019 Business Session Minutes.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the Business Session Minutes, as noted. Any corrections or additions? If not, clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Faust.
Aye.
Commissioner Allen.
Aye.
Commissioner Kleka.
Aye. I abstain.
Commissioner Hanslick.
Aye.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Yes.
Commissioner Brown.
Aye.
And Chairman Eiler.
Aye. Motion carried. Well, you had a heavy agenda review last week, didn't you?
Yes, so discussed.
You don't want to go there, Mr. Chairman.
Turning to reports and communications, Ms. Postock Ferguson.
No report this morning. Thank you.
All right. Next item is legislative update.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioner. I just have a brief report to you today. I did send you probably a lengthy report just of all the bills that were in conference committee, but I'm just going to highlight some of them that we have been following. The first one was signed by the governor, and it's the Committee on K-12 Education Budget that was passed, that was signed by the governor. And then some bills that came out of conference committee and are waiting for the governor to sign, because they passed both the House and the Senate. First one is House Bill 2031, and this is the, and I'm going to tell you kind of what these are, because a lot of these bills' numbers changed since we last talked about them, when, a week or two ago. This one is the one that amends the definition of the service connected for the Kansas Police and Firemen's Retirement System. The next bill is how, or Senate substitute for House Bill 2007, and this is one of the transportation bills that came out of committees waiting for governor's signature, and this authorizes toll projects even at a local level on new roads. So let's say you took one of the highways here and wanted to add an additional lane to it and told it you could do so. The next one is in regards to the election bill that we talked about a little bit last week, where four bills were melded into there. I did have a conversation with Commissioner, or Election Commissioner Ronnie Metzger, and their office was opposed to Senate Bill 129, which allowed voting at the, any location with the county on Election Day, and part of that is because of our internet connectivity, that that would not allow that to happen easily at all. So, the next one is a bill that has passed out of the House, but it's pending in the Senate, and they will probably look at it when they return. But this is now House Bill 2223, and you would have known it as House Bill 2006, and this one is the one that included the disclosure of the economic development programs and data. This House and Senate will be returning on May 1st for veto session. During that time, they still need to get a budget and their appropriations bills passed, and we'll see what else may be worked, but we will give you a full report. As veto session ends, we will bring our lobbyist in for just a report of the year of how we did within our policy platform and other bills that passed that impacted the county. And I stand for questions.
I want to, I want to go back to the, to the voting bill that you mentioned, just so there's no misunderstanding. Currently, our voting system is not connected to the internet, which gives us a high, high level of security, as far as the integrity of the voting system. If we had to connect to the internet, which I understand we might have to do if, to comply with this bill, that increases the insecurity and makes our system vulnerable to malicious activity that currently cannot occur. And so, there are some real issues that could impact us, yeah. Mr. Ashcraft.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, very good point. I just wanted to follow on, though. Is there a fiscal note for us if we are compelled to comply with the same-day election effort?
This one is not the same-day election one. That one did not ever get out of committee. This is the one that would allow you to vote at any location within the county.
I'm sorry, yes, that's the one I'm referring to. I'm sorry.
I do not know the fiscal note on that.
Yes, there is a fiscal note, and depending upon your viewpoint, I call it significant. Several hundred thousand dollars, perhaps.
For Johnson County or statewide?
No, for Johnson County.
For Johnson County, yeah. Thank you.
And in order to maintain security, I'm sure there would be a significant ongoing cost involved there also. So, any other questions? Cindy, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Next item. Information regarding the Appraiser's Office and the process to hire a new appraiser. I'll just say this. The information today is information only. Mr. Jarrett will explain to us some of the statutory requirements. Ms. Salter will talk to us about a process. And then, next week, we will have additional presentation by Representative for the Property Valuation Department. And next week will be an action item in regards to whether or not we do a national search. And so, Mr. Jarrett.
Yep. It would please the Board, Don Jarrett, Chief Counsel. As you are aware, Mr. Paul Welcome, the county appraiser, has submitted his retirement effective on June 15. He is currently serving a four-year term, where he was reappointed in July, July 1 of 2017. So your task now will be to fill the position for the remainder of that term. So the appointment that will be coming before you will be for the unexpired term running through June 30 of 2021. The appointment is made by the Board of County Commissioners. However, we are constrained by the statute in what we can look for and how we can go about making that appointment. And once we make the appointment, of course, the appraiser for professional services works basically under the direction and supervision of the Property Valuation Director, PVD, in Topeka. We've arranged for the PVD Director to be here next week, to help answer any questions you have, and to explain in a little more depth what the qualifications are that the state looks for in order to be a certified Kansas appraiser and eligible for being appointed, as well as discussing the processes that that appraiser will have to go through in order to comply with the requirements that the state has. Now, the statute does provide for minimum qualifications that the candidate must meet, but I want to emphasize, those are very minimum. We can add on to those, and in the past, we have, and you may want to consider what it is that you want to add on. We've got some recommendations. The statute requires the person to have three years of mass appraisal experience, and to be qualified as an eligible Kansas appraiser, which means they have to be on a list certified by the PVD Director. And in order to get on that list, they must hold one of three credentials, either being a certified general real property appraiser, a registered mass appraiser, or a valid residential evaluation specialist, or certified assessment evaluation designation from IAAO. Now, I don't know what all those mean personally, but the PVD Director next week will be able to explain to you what those distinctions are, or why they may be important. But it, the candidate must have at least that credential. What you would want to consider is whether or not you want an educational component on there, that is, a degree from a college or university, or even a master's type of degree. And in the past, we've recommended that they be a graduate of some college, or have some type of equivalency of that education requirement. You may want to require more experience than the three years. Under our current look through the job description, you know, we would look more at something equivalent for directors of being upwards of 10 or 15 years of actual experience, with a good chunk of that, probably five years, being of a managerial or supervisor-type level, because it is a fairly substantial department with a lot of people. The other point I would like to emphasize is that there are time constraints. While certainly you have a length of time to conduct the recruitment and get someone on board, there are some time constraints for us, depending on how we appoint an interim. If they're not a certified appraiser that's currently on the list, then we can only have an interim for six months before the state then will intercede and actually oversee our process until we get one that is on the list. So there are some time constraints. Mr. Welcome's given us a little break, because we have two months here before he's actually off the job. But we also want to be mindful of the appraisal process, and when we get into the August, September, October timeframe, that office gets extremely busy with their new go-around. So while it may seem like we could have some time here, it's going to be actually a fairly quick process. We do want the Board to be aware of that, and as we go through this process, it is going to require some commitment of time, and we hope you all are willing to keep with some timeframe. Becky Salter, the HR Director, is here, if you have questions.
Let me ask, are there questions of Mr. Jarrett at this point? Mr. Ashcraft?
One clarification, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Jarrett, you indicated that the PVD can or will intercede in six months. I mean, if we're making progress, will they intercede regardless?
If we don't appoint someone as the interim who is on their certified list, they can approve for us a person who is not for six months. At the end of that six-month period, if we don't have somebody to appoint as the appraiser, they do come in and basically supervise your operation. They are currently doing that in Sedgwick. Sedgwick is going through a recruitment process. They've hired a head-hunting firm, but they made the mistake of going beyond the six months with their interim, but without designating somebody that was on the list. So PVD is now actually managing the Appraiser's Office in Sedgwick.
Okay.
So it is, it is something we need to be mindful of that's there. They are very cooperative, though, and will work with us on a, on a number of ways to do that. And I think David Martin is who we've got coming next week will, will be glad to interact with us and cooperate how best we can get.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Chairman. Don, can you tell me how many employees are in the Appraiser's Office, total?
I think it's 90.
Eighty-eight?
I think it's right around 90.
Yeah, just a little under 90.
Right at 90, I believe.
And is the appraiser position statutorily required for all 105 counties? Does each county have its own standalone appraiser?
No, you have to have either a county appraiser, or what they call a district appraiser. There are some counties that, that go together and have a district.
Share that service.
So I don't, I don't believe there are anywhere near 100 across Kansas.
Okay. And is this, is this a function that is statutorily required, that we have a, an employee that serves as the appraiser, or is this, is there an opportunity to consider outsourcing this? Is there, does such an opportunity exist?
No, the statute is real specific. We have to appoint a person, and that person is a county employee, and that person does work under the umbrella and regulations that the state has established, so that appraisal is presumably uniform across the state.
To further his, his question there, on the other hand, we could appoint an appraiser, but the appraiser, the actual appraiser could coordinate with the county to actually contract out a bulk of their functions, if, if, if that was the desire, correct?
Some of the services, you know, if you're talking about the photos, the visits.
Whatever it is.
The property, the compiling of the data, that could probably be contracted. That's correct.
It's just the position that we're required to have.
The position and getting that work done. So if you contracted it out, it still has to meet all the state requirements, and you have to get all the pieces.
Yes. I, yeah.
I guess that varies a question. Why would you want to, why would you not have a qualified appraiser who can handle all those issues and not, not have to contract that, any portion of that?
I'm not just trying to get it clarified.
Yeah, me too. I'm trying to make sure that I've got clarity on the whole process.
I'm not advocating one thing or another at this point.
And I'm not either, but I don't want to leave an opportunity on the table. If there's an opportunity to get us to the same place for less money, then that's all I wanted to know. I want to understand that.
Mr. Allen.
Just a quick question. Do we have someone on staff currently that would meet that designation? I guess my concern is, it may take longer than six months, and I'd prefer that we have somebody on our staff. So if we, are there candidates that are currently employed in the Johnson County Appraiser's Office that would meet that designation? Office that would meet that designation in case it did take longer than six months?
I believe so. I believe we have people who would have the right certifications.
Could you check that out and make sure we know and who they are?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Based on that, my opinion would be is, if we appoint an interim person, that person should meet that requirement, so we don't get potentially caught with the state coming in, so.
Chairman, could I?
We will have to appoint an interim. And Ms. Salter can give us an idea of the timeline. This decision is not something that we should put off, but we need to address immediately. And I'll make other comments. Was Ms. Fast, was there, or Penny?
One thing to keep in mind is, because of the notification that Mr. Welkum gave us, the six months, I understand it does not start until mid-June, when his date ends. So, that gives us a little bit of time, not much. But I would add, I was going to say what you did, Chairman, that the next cycle, the quicker we can get somebody on, is more ideal to be in on that next cycle. It really starts in August, but really in earnest in October. So, it'd be in all of our best interest to have somebody on board then if we can.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Jarrett. Ms. Salter?
Good morning. Becky Salter with Human Resources Department. The Chairman asked me to provide just kind of an overview of what to anticipate as far as the recruitment goes. We would be putting out a solicitation for executive recruiters to express an interest in helping us fill this position. I would anticipate with the Board's direction that we could get that request out either this afternoon or tomorrow. We've done this before. We've generally had a pretty good response. Throughout the year, we collect information from executive recruiters, so we have a pretty good stable to reach out to. We would have that open probably about 10 days, up to two weeks maybe, for them to give us back an informal proposal, just seeking the very basic information to make sure they have the qualifications we would be looking for in filling this position. I would recommend we move very quickly on that part of it, as far as selecting an executive recruiter. The more important part is selecting the actual Appraiser. Just looking at a high-level timeframe, I would anticipate, if we were able to get that notice out this week, we would be ready for the Board, if you select a subcommittee to select the recruiter, for instance, that group would be able to start reviewing those submittals by the end of this month, maybe into the first week in May. I would then suggest the selection committee come together and kind of narrow down those search firms to those that you might want to do a video conference with, interview. I would not probably recommend flying anybody in for this meeting due to time limitations and the availability of the consultants primarily. I would see that happening second week of May. That subcommittee would then need to kind of, maybe direct HR or do it themselves, do a reference check on those that they want to move forward with, just to touch base with other organizations that have used the consultant to make sure they do deliver on what they say they will deliver. And hopefully, by the end of May, we would be ready to at least engage that consultant to start the search.
Mr. Clicker, did you have a comment?
Mr. Chairman, I think what Becky is suggesting makes sense. And what I would suggest, Becky, is that if the Board gives you the go-ahead here, as you're getting the proposals in, instead of waiting for them all to come in, if you could do kind of the background check along the way, so you're not, a lot of this can be done concurrently in order to help reduce that time, and then basically give us a tally of what the responses are. But when you do those background checks, I'd be very interested to find out the experience that they've had in this type of position, but at the same time, what their success rate and timelines in trying to secure that. Because before we can go to the next step through the actual recruiting process, this has to be finished.
Right.
And I'd be real curious on their timelines from start to finish.
And that's generally the information, Commissioner, that we ask when you're sending it in. Give us a proposed timeline, cost information, success rate, and even what guarantees you have that we're going to, when you find our candidate, that they'll be successful in the job for a period of time.
And that, it seems to me, makes sense. And before we even go to the next step, we need to get this one finished.
Sure. And we do a lot concurrently behind the scenes. We'll be putting a high-level summary of each of the submissions together, so that, you know, on a one sheet, you can kind of see the highlights. But those that are involved in the selection process, we'll get the whole submittal as well, if they want to dive deeper.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else?
No, I would say after the consultant is selected, be mindful that this process is going to run concurrent with our budget process. So, it will be a little bit more of your time, but the bulk of the work will be done by the consultant in identifying and, you know, talking with candidates and narrowing those lists down for those that are the most qualified to come before you. But just keep in mind, we're going to need to establish some dates pretty early on, once the consultant is hired, and kind of hold those aside for things like meeting with the consultant and actually going through the interview process.
Well, I would make this suggestion, if there's a consensus of the Commission, would direct Ms. Salter to begin that process immediately. And next week, we could take official action to authorize that, as well as other timetables that might be involved.
Very good.
So, if there's no, so you have that.
Yes, sir, we'll move forward.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Becky.
Mr. Jarrett?
And as you indicated, it would be good to add an item to the agenda for the 18th to consider authorizing a search process for the County Appraiser position.
That will be done, okay? Ms. Ansley?
Yes, I just had a question. I'm not sure if Mr. Jarrett, if this is something you can answer at this point in time. I'm just wondering, what is the process for appointing the interim? How does that work?
Well, I anticipate, or Mr. Jarrett, you can speak to that, but a recommendation will come to us. And again, we have until June 14, but concurrent with our search process will be an evaluation of an interim. So, hopefully, that can occur also by the end of May or first part of June.
Thank you.
One other item I would mention, which we can discuss further next week, and that is, sometimes we've had a subcommittee involved in the search process, which evaluates the search firms and then makes a recommendation to the full commission. Other times, we've had the full commission involved. And in this particular case, I would suggest, if there's interest by the Commissioners, that we include all Commissioners in this process from the start to the finish. This is an important key position, I would describe. And so, if there's interest by any Commissioner to be involved in this process, I think it should be welcomed. I would say this, it will take additional time, so don't be surprised at that. We could have three to five meetings in the month of May, reviewing, you know, search firm possibilities. So, this will not be, it won't be one-hour meeting. So, but again, we can talk about that next week. But I think my suggestion would be to any Commissioner who wants to be involved in that process, that they would be welcome to do so. As I understand it, Mr. Jarrett, the up-to-selection of a search firm can take place in public setting. Is that right?
Yes.
Beyond that, when we come down to selecting particular individuals based on their qualifications, that that would be done in an executive session?
Yes. When you start discussing individual employees or potential employees, we will be doing that most likely in executive session.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? Mr. Ashcraft?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I commend you and staff for this effort, and am very fully supportive. Process question, though, why do we have to wait till next week to take formal action? Why couldn't we just go ahead and do that today?
It's not on the agenda today. And in the process of being fully transparent, we want to place it on the agenda if there may be public comment about it. And so, Ms. Salter will begin the process.
Okay.
And immediately, but we'll take formal action next week.
Well, I look forward to the public comment, people who do not want us to hire an Appraiser. An oppressor!
An oppressor.
Yeah, a Freudian slip there.
Actually, there's probably a lot that would appreciate no Appraiser.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you. Are there any other reports or communications? All right. Moving to Commission comments, Ms. Fast.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I've been making the rounds, speaking with each of the city councils, had a great visit this week with City of Marion and City of Fairway. Just wanted to let people know that our cities and our county commission are very accessible. You can just show up, submit a comment card. That's what I love about Johnson County, that you can speak, you can connect with your elected officials. I also want to shout out to all those who love craft beer. I have gotten now over 40 contacts from people. Northeast Johnson County loves its beer. I will say, I've heard from about as many people as I did on Roland Park City Council for Backyard Hens. Not quite, Backyard Hens is still leading. But anyways, I'm very supportive of this initiative to remove food. So, for those of you who want to contact me, please do, but to not fear. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Clicker?
Mr. Chairman, first of all, I want to extend an appreciation to the folks over at, in the Sheriff's Office that conducted our second community meeting up in Stillwell or down in Stillwell. As you know, the first one we had, we had 100 and some folks show up. Again, at this one, we had another 100 and some show up. This community really turns out. The Sheriff has done great, and all the community organizations, Stillwell Community Organization that's helped sponsor this, has been terrific and very, very supportive. These folks are engaged, and it's great to see it. Secondly, in reference to the issue that's being brought up to us by the food and the alcohol law and changing that law here, may I request that our attorney be instructed to work up some ballot language that we can start reviewing the pros and cons on in order for this to change? I've been advised that it has to go to a vote of the general public, has to go in during, I think, a general election. And in order to start this conversation from the dais, if the attorney can, our attorney can go ahead and work up the ballot language, and then allow us a chance to kind of look at the pros and cons of that along the way.
Well, let's not get the cart before the horse. Number one, we have to determine when an election can be held. And the state statute speaks to a state general election. And there's not another state general election until 2020. And secondly, as I understand, Mr. Jarrett, the ballot language is specifically outlined in state statute, the ballot language that must be used.
There is a ballot question presented in the statute, yes.
If you'll provide that to us, I appreciate it, so we can get a look at that. And can you get the clarification as to what the Chair is asking about, whether or not it has to be a state general election and not necessarily a county?
We've got that inquiry into the Secretary of State's office. The statute itself says the next general election, which normally would be 2020. But since that statute was adopted, the legislature changed around a lot of our election scheduling and moved some elections to the November of the odd number of years. So, we're asking the State Secretary of State's office to say to us, did that alter any of this, or is it still the 2020 time? Right now, it appears it's still the 2020, but we're waiting for direction from them.
And as a follow-up, Mr. Chairman, is that based on the timing of this issue, if we could call for a study session here to go through that and also a public hearing?
Well, I think as soon as we get clarification on when the election can be held. If it can be held in November of 19 this year, then the deadline for putting it on the ballot is what, in June or?
It'd be September.
September, you're right. So, we would have to move, but if it's 2020, we've got time.
We do have time, but I think if we continue to move this process, it'll at least give the folks who are in a strong position of advocating to let them know that we are actually taking their questions and issues here seriously, even though we legally may not be able to put it on for another year, at least they know we've positioned ourselves to get that.
Well, I think that goes without saying, but we need to be upfront with them, that there are these questions that need to be resolved.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Mr. Ashcraft?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Allen?
Just a quick comment. A great presentation on the volunteers. I actually learned two new programs, and I was commenting to Commissioner Brown, you know, one of the strengths of the county, we actually, through the various organizations, there's frankly probably tens of thousands of people that volunteer for a lot of different important programs in Johnson County. And last week, I had two different individuals make comments that had their taxes prepared at the extension office, very complimentary of the staff. One person in the past had filed, married couple individually, there was part of a family farm corporation, and had filed that way for a number of years, and went in and assumed and wanted to do it the same way. And the person said, well, these tax laws have changed, let's run it both ways. And with the new tax law and the higher exemptions, they got back like $600 more because they filed married, but was very impressed with the process. Had another individual that went in and wanted to file the homestead, and the same thing, very professional, very helpful, but two very positive comments on that. So, the other thing, it's fairly significant savings, you know, for someone retired. I think a married couple, probably the average cost to get that prepared is probably $2 to $250 today, but two very positive comments on a good volunteer program.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Nothing, Chairman.
Ms. Ansley?
Yes, I, excuse me, just wanted to follow up on a couple of the comments. I too have been out talking to HOAs and other community groups, and I think I can speak for all of us that we are all very, very open and willing to come and speak to community groups. I know I really enjoy it, I learn a lot, and I appreciate the opportunity to answer specific questions about highway projects or other items. In terms of the volunteerism, I want to highly recommend that people consider applying for this fall's Johnson County Citizens Academy. I had the opportunity to take it. We have two more class, or one more class, actually. And I have been amazed at the number of volunteer opportunities in Johnson County that I had no idea even existed. I wish I could do a lot of them, because they're really fun, and I appreciate the folks that put that on. I know that the applications aren't open yet, but please, if you are interested, go to the Johnson County Government website, search for Citizens Academy, and stay on top of that. It's definitely a worthwhile investment of your time. And lastly, I wanted to just mention that Commissioner Ashcraft and I had the opportunity to visit with a local microbrewery, and that was very helpful to hear their concerns and to see how that impacts their business. And I look forward to hearing more about how we proceed. Thank you.
Two or three things. We do have a study session scheduled for 1:00 p.m. today in Room 202, 204. The subjects are update on Kansas Open Meeting requirements, as well as report from staff on tax collection strategy. Also, Wednesday, the 17th, is our joint meeting with the Parks Board, and that will occur at the Meadow Brook Park Clubhouse beginning at 6:00 p.m. And we do have a committee the whole scheduled for 11:00 a.m. this morning in this room. So, there being no other items, we are adjourned from our regular session. We'll take a short break and come back for agenda review for next week. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.